We now call the hall, the items from the public.
Please state your name for the record, please.
Corey Rodriguez from Martinsburg. Sorry I haven't made it in in the last few months. Me and my wife have a three-month-old baby boy, so needless to say, there's no free time or sleep for me.
Congratulations.
Thank you. But I just wanted to comment on a few topics that you guys covered over the last couple of months. The first would be the Tiff districts. I know recently you voted to move forward to try and expand to help out a business. I mean, I think that's a great idea. It's the Tiff district is one of a few tools that you have in your toolbox. And anytime, you know, you feel that it could help us out with, or, you know, getting utilities, or bringing in business, whatever, you have to use it. So I'm all for expanding when you feel it's needed to. Next topic, the impact fees. I thank you for approving and putting in place, I know sixty or ninety days from when you voted on it, the residential impact fees. And I hope that in the future, we'll be able to figure out a fair way to implement commercial impact fees as well. The next thing, the one percent sales tax referendum. I encourage you to keep pushing for that. There's, there's no reason that our delegates and senators shouldn't give you the ability to put it on our ballot for the people of Berkeley County, the people that's, it's going to affect the vote on. I, I would keep pushing for it, and I think that, you know, everybody's like, oh, well, it won't pass, it won't pass. But that's not true. I think it's about education, education of the public. And you have to look at, you know, if we don't have this, hundred percent, whatever we need is going to be paid by the taxpayers. If we do have this, and especially in our position with all the other states around us, and the people that come through here on eighty-one, they would help pay for our growth in the community. And yes, we would pay some, but it wouldn't be fully on the taxpayers. So I think it's all about education to get that through, and I think you should keep pushing for that. The next topic, the ambulance fees. So four years ago, when we had a meeting about this, it was, it's sixty dollars, they asked to go to one-ten. You know, at that time, we agreed, you know, the first one should be eighty-five, and then the next two years were going to be one-ten. And we also added in the commercial fees. So I noticed this year, which would be the third year at one-ten, that we're still paying one-ten at the residential. So I don't know if I missed something, but my question would be, why hasn't the residential been able to come back down now that commercial has been in for a couple of years? Because, you know, going back to the big picture, the residents paid from nineteen eighty-seven to twenty-twenty-one a hundred percent on their own, there was no commercial. So I think it's, and I stated this, you know, back at that meeting, you know, when that money got in there, it's only fair to see the residential come back down. And maybe I missed something, maybe I didn't. And my other question would be, with impact fees, is, is that money allowed to be used that, that could also help the residential fee to be dropped back down? That's two questions I have, and, you know, just concerns. And the last thing I wanted to talk about real quick, I know there's, I can't remember his name, but there's a guy that comes in, and he's asking for parks and recreation about a levy. My, my feeling on that is, you know, it's not even fair to consider it right now for the fact that we're going to have residential impact fees giving us money. And I know a lot of the money can be used for parks and rec. So there's no way to tell what that impact is until we collect and see what we can give to them. So I, I, I don't think it would be fair now to just go to the residents, you know, have them kick in money, and then, you know, a year or two down the road, they have a surplus. And it's like, you know, why, why do we tax our residents a levy? You know, I, I, I just think it, the fair way would be to see what impact the impact fees money has on them before going forward with that. That's all I have for you guys, and hopefully I'll make it back here sooner than later.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items from the public? Need a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Have any questions for Tracy on the purchase order log? Hearing none. We have no internal budget revisions this week. Change of status, new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Rob Blair, Sheriff for Sarah Questman, as a deputy with an annual salary of sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's effective September two, twenty-twenty-five. Change of status received from Tim Zaya, Community Corrections Director, for Jeff Judd, Case Manager Coordinator, to be reclassified to Case Manager with an annual salary change from fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and one dollars to fifty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars, as effective August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Change of status received from Chase Weinbrenner, IT Manager for Alex Nguyen, IT Analyst, to be promoted to Senior IT Analyst with an annual salary change from sixty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars to seventy thousand, sixty-one dollars, effective September one, twenty-twenty-five. Change of status received from Chase Weinbrenner, IT Manager for Chase Greenwald, GIS Coordinator, to receive an increase in salary for taking on additional responsibilities, with a change of salary from fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars to sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars, effective September one, twenty-twenty-five. Change of status received from Chase Weinbrenner, IT Manager for Taylor Butts, IT Coordinator, for salary increase for taking on additional responsibilities with a salary change of forty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars to forty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars, that's effective September one, twenty-twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Jeffrey Tour, Deputy Court Marshal, effective August eighth, twenty-twenty-five. And we have a letter of retirement received from Gary Wine, County Administrator, for our own Penny Shul, Office Administrator, effective September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Does it sound weird, hearing your name like that?
We're not going to approve this, are we?
We're going to pull that off the agenda. Not old enough to repay.
Well, I didn't think so either. Okay, on the August seventh...
I say this with the heart, congratulations.
August seventh, twenty-twenty-five, Commissioner Boyd and Commissioner Hardy were not present, so if we could go ahead and approve those minutes for August the seventh?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it.
Staying due to absence.
And have two extensions, thank you. Now, next up, bond release. Our county engineer has sent in to us bond release for South Brook, Section One, Phase Two, that's for final plat, file number twenty-three oh-six-dish-two-thirteen, and it's tied to number twenty-two-ten-dish-three-eleven and number twenty-one-ten-dish-three-eighty-seven. Next one, bond release, Section One, Phase One, BCP, file number twenty-two-oh-two-dish-zero-six-three, and it's tied to BCP, file number twenty-one-oh-seven-dish-two-forty-six and twenty-one-oh-five-dish-one-seventy-six. Doug makes that recommendation as well. Have bond release for South Brook, Section One, grading, BCP, file number twenty-one-twelve-dish-four-thirty-nine, tied to BCP, number twenty-one-zero-five-dish-one-seventy-six and twenty-one-zero-five-dish-zero-three-zero-one. Doug makes that recommendation as well, through our engineer. Anybody have any questions for Doug? Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Thank you, Doug.
We do have a, a letter requesting our endorsement for a sale of alcohol at I Know Ya Fuel's venue, and that's for a private wedding, which will be September the twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. And we have done those in the past.
If, just a quick question, if they're not going to sell it, did they need our approval? I mean, if they're having it there, but...
You're not giving approval anyway.
No, 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 I meant they didn't need our... Ah, okay.
Okay, need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. On the correction assessment log, good morning, Larry, our Assessor Larry Hess. Morning, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
And you can't retire, I know. Sorry.
Sorry.
It won't last long if she spends a couple of weeks with her husband, she'll be back. He'll be gone. Get her out of here!
I understand that. Okay, first thing I've got, we've got a little mix of everything today, but first thing I have to bring to you would be taxpayer error. We had four, we had to write up this week. They just didn't write off their vehicles when they sent in the returns, but total of those four come up to one thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents for taxpayer error exoneration.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the taxpayer error for personal property in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next thing I have would be office error for personal property. I have a total of twenty-three today, and they're all based on the reasons that's listed there. The last one I wanted to mention to you on the third page was for Triplar Incorporated. It's a business. And when they sent in their return, of course, they put on the returns the amount of what they paid for their inventory originally. Then it depreciates. But we take the depreciated value and multiply it by sixty percent times tax rate. They didn't use the depreciated value, they used the original appraisal value. It makes a big difference.
Forty percent.
That's the, that's the big one on, on this whole twenty-three, it's thirty thousand dollars. But it was, I think the total amount they sent in for what they, their values was like eight million some dollars, and the depreciated value was sixty some hun, six million and some, but it was the big difference, but it came up to thirty thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars, ninety-three cents. I hate to see those, but it, it is a mistake, and when you deal with big numbers, sometimes that's the way they turn out. Any rate, for those twenty-three personal property, they total up to thirty-six thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and sixteen cents.
I need a motion to approve the twenty-three personal tax exonerations due to office error, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it.
Good, thank you. Uh, I do have, uh, uh, for real estate, office error, I do have seven, I think. And, um, most, the first two was for Homestead, uh, got, uh, got removed. But the last five, uh, this is for, uh, Michael McCarty, that's a McFarland house. And we had that listed as far as the basement area, we had it listed as having a full basement. And we found out it did not have a full basement, so. And it's been that way for like years and years, for a long time. So, uh, sent John over, he resketched it, and we made a difference, uh, adjustment. I told him, I said, we could go back five years, I didn't want to go back anymore in five years. That's usually standard what you guys agree to, and so, but went back with five years on, on that. But out of those, uh, seven, uh, the total amount is three thousand, six hundred and seven dol, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents for those seven real estate exemptions.
Very good.
Yeah, I was going to ask you whether there are five of them, but you said you went back five years.
Five years, yeah.
Yeah, the basement's under the original house, that's it.
Yeah, it's just got a
There's not much down there.
Six hundred square feet or something like that. We had twenty-some hundred square feet, full basement. It was that way probably since the state came in and did the original evaluation back years and years ago. And we called it in, it's corrected now.
Very good, yep. Need a motion...
Can we do that, though? Go back that many, okay, I'm just asking.
Need a motion to approve the seven real estate exonerations as presented, totaling three thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Do you have an application for consolidation?
Yes, sir. I do have one for, uh, Raymond, Patrick Raymond, or Raymond Patrick, I'm not sure. They had two, two parcels in the Jarrettstown District. Excuse me, map eight, parcel ten-point-three and ten-point-two. And they wanted us to consolidate them so they could get a, uh, one tax bill, so. Had to bring it to you for your approval, so, just one of those today.
Need a motion to approve the application for consolidation of property?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it.
Thank you. Uh, the last thing I have would be, I do have an application for, uh, to split the tax bill for a divorce uh, for, uh, Thomas and Misty Wigman. They had four vehicles totaled, uh, total assessed value of forty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. And we split the bill up, and, uh, Thomas got just the one vehicle, twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars worth of assessment. And Misty got the other three Subarus, and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars worth of assessment, so. Need your approval so we can give them separate bills.
All right. Need, um, approval of the apportionment of the assessment per the final divorce order?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Have a good day. Uh, board and meeting reports, uh, we'll run that until nine fifty-five, so. Commissioner Boyd?
Uh, I don't have anything to report at the moment.
Commissioner Hardy?
Uh, unfortunately, I missed my meetings, and I missed last week's meeting, I apologize for missing that. I came down sick, and, uh, kind of hit me like a ton of bricks on Wednesday, and, uh, took me the rest of the week and most of the weekend to recover, but, uh, I'm feeling better now. But I did miss, uh, my waterboard meeting on Monday night, and, uh, maybe another meeting here or there, but, uh, I'll, I'll try to do better.
I'm glad you're feeling better and you didn't give it to us.
Yeah, exactly. I, I thought I could come, I probably kind of made it here Thursday morning. I would have looked terrible, Eddie would have pushed me over in a corner, and...
Wait a minute, you would have looked worse than what you do now.
Yeah, I would have. Yeah, I was shivering, and I had a fever, and everything was not good at all, so...
I think, I think John and Penny were out preparing for her retirement, because she was going too, with the same thing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Actually, I, I did have a meeting. I had a meeting last night. I participated by telephone because I wasn't able to be there in person. Uh, it was a roundhouse meeting, and, um, we have got back underway with finishing the elevator project, that is back to be finished. We met with CEC, the new, uh, architects and design firm. Went over preliminary stuff, uh, on what order of things we're going to do with the, um, moving forward with the HUD grant that we got over there for seven hundred and fifty thousand, which includes, uh, concrete floors and a fraud and switch shop for the, um, the farmer's market area, as well as the concrete floors and the bridge and machine shop, and, uh, and just what order of things for finishing the whole project, access to the property, all those type of things. We did finally get our reimbursement for grant money for the window project that was done there. We'd been waiting from the state, with the change of administration and all that, it took forever, but we finally got that check in the mail. And, um, talked about the farmer's market, we also talked about the new film group that's coming here. Most likely be running the roundhouse, or not the whole roundhouse, just the bridge and machine shop for, um, for sixty days, I believe, um, starting in September. And, uh, they offered us sixteen thousand plus an upgrade on, um, some doors that need work over there in, in Lou, and, uh, that's pretty much what's going on.
Very good, thank you. We might as well go ahead with the bid opening. Nine fifty-five for patrol rifles.
Yes, sir, so you do have the certification of publication. It was advertised on your website and distributed to known vendors, and I believe there's two, two in here. Good paper.
It's from seventy-six. Seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
The first bid is from Atlantic Tactical, and they're out of New Cumberland, Pennsylvania. Their total for all equipment is one thousand, I'm sorry, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty cents.
How many rifles are we purchasing?
Seventy-six. Second bid is Lance Industrial Partners Company out of Georgia. Chickamauga, Georgia. Don't ask me to pronounce that again, please. Uh, the total bid price is one hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars... Uh, the total bid price is $190,687.50.
Indian tribe, I've been there.
Have you?
Yeah. And just for clarification, Mr. Hardy, it's 76 of one version and then there's a quantity of 14 of another, so all in, 76 plus 14. Right. You gonna dance for four minutes and we'll do the next one?
Yeah. We can, uh, Commissioner Whitaker, if you'd go ahead with your board meeting report.
Actually, the only thing that I could report on is that, uh, the seminar, the conference we went to at, um, at Kanane for the auditors, and, um, a few things that I got enlightened on about what you, um, what the IRS expects you to do and what the, um, the state auditors expect you to do as far as full compensation is, types of clothes, IDs on them.
Or taxable benefit.
Taxable benefits, so. Probably my most educated, the way I can, that's all I have, I have other meetings coming up next week, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller?
Well, I also attended the auditor's conference, and it's always great to be at Kanane Valley, it's one of the real true treasures of West Virginia. Not only was the food always good at these conferences, but the weather was perfect and just awesome to be there. As Gary says, other than setting in the meetings, the best thing about the whole thing is the camaraderie with the other commissioners around the state and talking during the hospitality hours or at dinner. And we even had the pleasure Monday evening, State Auditor Mark Hunt sat down at our table and we had a great conversation for 15 minutes or so with him, and that was pretty awesome. He seemed like a really genuine guy, and we brought up some points of interest that we thought would help the counties, and he offered to pursue some of it, so. Then yesterday morning, with Commissioner Goganare, we were on R and R for an hour, and got drilled pretty good with some questions, so, I think we held our own, so, it was an interesting conversation.
It was, it was all good. All right. I also attended the auditor seminar this, this past week, it's always good to listen to concerns that other counties are going through and, um, try to help solve some of theirs and, and share our concerns with, with other folks as well. Uh, as Commissioner Keller said, we were on the radio with WRNR Radio, and they're, uh, they're always fair with their questions, it's always good. Uh, also, I had a development authority meeting yesterday morning, and something that we're seeing that's kinda new for us is with the tariffs that have been, uh, put in place by the federal government, we're seeing some companies looking here, uh, to come back into the United States, so, two in particular that Jennifer and her staff are working with right now. And, um, we'll see how that rolls out, and I have a fireboard meeting tonight, so, see what's going on then. Next up, Gary, if you go over the...
Sure. Before I do that, I, I would offer, you know, as the commission goes to these meetings and you talk about camaraderie and networking, we hadn't even checked into the hotel until there was a commissioner from another county saying, "Hey, Berkeley County, how did you do this, why did you do it, and would you mind sharing your pitfalls?" At dinner that evening, had the same conversation, and the next morning, a different person sat down with commissioners of yourself, and I getting great joy out of seeing other folks from around the state looking at you and asking for your opinion. There, you know, you, you're so driven and you have so much opportunity for change, and many of them don't. They've been doing the same thing, a commissioner from Preston County, I got to talk to him 33 years he's been a commissioner, and he's like, hand to goodness, and I'll quote, "It's really nice to see the Berkeley County Commissioners at this meeting because they were absent most of the time prior." So, from me to you, it, it's good to see you take your personal time, 'cause we all know you don't get paid for being there, and to really share what's happening here in Berkeley County, it's awesome, so. In relation to that, there was a couple of them that whenever they hear where we're from, they said, "Man, y'all got it happening out there." I don't know if we got it happening, but, uh, we're, we're very fortunate to have the, have what we have. The, the next three bids are for the new transit authority project here on Raleigh Street. In this instance, you, the county commission's ID department, IT department is actually a vendor to the project, uh, and in, in order to satisfy your procurement requirements and the federal transit authority procurement requirements, we're actually bidding these as a subcontractor for that project. As you all know, it saves a small fortune in effort, uh, when you do this work for them. You do have certification of publication, uh, it was published on your website, was distributed to known vendors of interest, and this is for network equipment hardware, cable, fiber, copper, uh, ends, all kinds of stuff.
Always open, as I had, uh, a crew at my house yesterday afternoon putting my fiber optics in from the, out along the road to my house, and they're coming next Tuesday to actually put my modem into, so I'll have service probably next week in the Back Creek Valley with fiber optics, and I'll be one of the first up 2,500 customers here in the next few months that's gonna be getting this, and it's, I can't tell you how excited and pleased people are for this program that the county led to have, have done, and it's a wonderful, wonderful thing, so. I'm gonna have high-speed internet at my house for $49.99 a month, I'm paying 70 now to US Cellular for a modem that works sometimes when it feels like it, and, uh, it's just, I'll have TV access if I choose to do it, and it's a wonderful thing, and the commission took the lead on this, you know, I'm sure, and I know for a fact because they, a lot of people tell me how pleased the Back Creek Valley residents are about this, so, just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
Well, we, we did take the role, the leading role in that, and that was Stu Gary's expertise, quite honestly.
Yep.
And to identify those areas that, that were lacking, uh, broadband, and then, so, we matched up with the state and put money in towards bringing those costs down, uh, to the vendors, and, uh, I'm happy that we're gonna send it on down through the valley, it's coming, so.
Eighteen million dollars later.
It's been a long way, it's taken a minute, but we're gonna get there, I promise you, we're gonna get there. Uh, next up is Teleplus Corporation out of Hagerstown, Maryland, $23,676.36. That is for the network equipment. The second one is from Barry Solutions Group out of Altoona, Pennsylvania, an amount of The next one is a bid for, uh, security cameras, also for Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority.
Mr. President, you do, you have, um, the certification of publication, it was placed on your website and distributed to known vendors of interest, and there are many coming your way.
Not gonna be a record, though.
No, sir, it's not gonna make it, but it looks like you're more than 10.
You wanna save these?
No, I think there's just ready to be.
Frontier put, actually put in $11 million of that money for this project. Of course, they've been bought out by Verizon lately now, so they're owned by Verizon, but that transaction in selling out didn't impede the progress of this particular project at all, and...
No more dial-up, okay?
The state, the state put in, the state put in over $6 million, and Berkeley County Commission put in a million dollars for that project.
This bid is from Total Control LLC out of Canton, Ohio, an amount of $114,206.45. The next bid is from Alpha Technologies out of Hurricane, West Virginia, amount of This one is Riverside Technologies out of North Sioux City, South Dakota, $124,666.19. Tate Communications LLC, Montclair, West Virginia, $146,238.59. This one is Teleplus Corporation out of Hagerstown, Maryland, $251,355.72. Low Voltage LLC doing business as Get Wired, out of Shepherstown, West Virginia, $100,656. Bearcom, out of Columbia, Maryland, with amount of $123,322.37. I had to get you an address for them, but their amount is $184,078.53.
Altoona, Pennsylvania.
Altoona, Pennsylvania. Number 10, Barry Solutions, Altoona, Pennsylvania, $214,077.15.
Two from the same vendor?
That's what it is.
Huh? Must be different options.
I think we're gonna have an even dozen. Lot of baker's dozen.
I think there are options instead of sealing them in the same... Same price.
Same company.
We've seen that before where they err on the side of caution since they're sealed, instead of putting option A and B in the same envelope, they'll put in two envelopes. Does that mean their total is a double amount, or that's two options?
Two options, A and B, I'm sure of it. Yeah, we'll, we'll check them out.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go into our, our bid openings. Next up.
We got one more bid opening.
Whoa, I'm sorry.
For access controls for the transit authority project. So this is card readers, door strikes, magnetic locks, all of that stuff, you do have certification of publication, it was placed on the website as well as distributed to known vendors of
All right, first bid is Teleplus Corporation out of Hagerstown, Maryland, $72,208.64. Next bid is from Low Voltage LLC doing business as Get Wired, out of Shepherstown, West Virginia, It's nice when they follow the bidding instructions and put the paperwork, bids on the front. Barry Solutions at Altoona, Pennsylvania, $67,760.35. That's it? Good deal. All right, everybody called up, Penny called up?
Yes.
All right. Next up, Chief Eric Connet.
Good morning, sir.
And Chief Young, good morning, sir.
Shelley Brock and Brandy Sullivan as well.
Shelley and Brandy.
First item is your request for staffing.
Okay. So as you, as you are all well aware, the sheriff's office has an abundant amount of civil service to serve every day. We lost Bob Schouse, not, well, I shouldn't say lost, he retired, uh, several months back, probably six months or so back, um, and that fell upon the deputies to serve all the papers. We got backed up pretty, pretty bad, but I can tell you, as of last night, we had about 30 papers in our boxes to serve, so, going from 200 down to 30, I think is pretty good. We did hire a part-time civil service process server, Ms. Kelly Gardner-Jones. We did hire a part-time civil service process server, Ms. Kelly Gardner-Jones, and as of June 18th, 2025, we lost a, I shouldn't say lost, she resigned her position as a part-time in the front office, Brenna Benham. So what I'm asking the commission is for your approval to take the two part-time positions, merge them into one full-time position. The salary that we were thinking about doing for her was $39,017. Now with that said, there's going to be some benefit cost, which is gonna, which is gonna be $13,902. That $39,017 can be absorbed by the current sheriff's office budget. I spoke to Mr. Wine, he did a bunch of numbers crunching for us, because that's what he's really good at, and he came down to a, a final ask of just around $7,000.
$8,942.
Okay, so it, it went up a little bit.
So, so I didn't, Deputy County Administrator Winebrender did, who is an expert of this, and moral to the story is that the change in the processes, as the commission knows, when you have a part-time employee, you don't have benefits, you know, insurance costs. So what the sheriff's department has done, and they had a full-time position resign, and they did some restructuring over the last year. In that process, they have some residual monies left over from that restructuring. So if you remove that from the $13,000, that they're, the difference, as well as the salary that was budgeted and where they want to start the new, and moral to the story is, $8,942 is what they would be asking from you in the next budget year, in the rest of this budget year. $8,942.
Is this for the rest of this year, or is that the cost for the whole year?
That's the cost for the year. That's it. So they have everything to cover, so you're essentially, they're essentially asking for $8,942.
Are there any questions for the chief?
I personally knew some people that have done this personally, and I think the full-time position is very important. I think if you get more consistency with that, then you get more out of the person. I know when he was doing it, he did a very good job for you guys, and you didn't have these issues at all, so.
Did a great job.
Hopefully you can get the right person to do it.
We did, we found, yeah, she's doing a great job so far.
Take a special person to get up at 5:00 in the morning, go knock on somebody's house when it's dark out with bad news, but, yeah.
So if I could offer to the commission that the court has actually said and expressed great concern that the sheriff's department wasn't keeping up, so Eric, when, when the chief mentions to you that they're caught up, the court nudged that effort and said, hey, that nudge bled over to uniform officers doing this kind of work and not doing patrol or other things they should do. So even these two chiefs you see here have been out to, to work down those 200-plus to where they are now. So it was a full court press to kind of get in the position you are now, but I think this ask is so they can stay on top of it and not end up with those large deficits moving forward.
And that person does wear a uniform and a weapon as well.
Yes, sir.
But they're not a, they're not a civil service deputy sheriff.
Correct.
But they do wear a uniform, weapon, and they're in a.
And then a marked vehicle.
County vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Marked vehicles for their protection.
Yeah, I think it's very important for us to have timely, those things we deliver timely to keep the courts running. I mean, I know how important it is to get those served so people can get to their court dates, and I think $8,000 is a, is a very minimal ask for us to put someone on full-time to make sure we're having a continuity of service. I mean, continuity of service is very important, and I, myself, I think that's a very small ask to make sure that we are getting people served in a timely manner and keeping the courts running and being able to let your deputies that are on the street to do what they do and not burden them with this type of work when we have someone else that we kind of backfill that position with, so.
Well, part of the puzzle, part of the team. You know, and we, we met with a judge, you know, she had concerns over these papers getting filed, and I appreciate you all's attention to this, to get caught up and hopefully stay caught up.
We've all done it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate that, I, I know that, so. Need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
There's probably a motion and second. Any further discussion?
All fair, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you all.
And now your out-of-state tags.
Out-of-state tags.
Thanks for the paper, Brandy.
So.
Call her, too.
Thank you, ma'am. Brandy and Shelley have been doing an outstanding job with his out-of-state tags. Brandy's been putting together data and stats ever since she started doing this. Shelley's been on the phone, making phone calls, doing follow-up, and Brandy showed me what she had, and I thought that instead of you guys listening to me babble about the out-of-state tags, it'd be better for us to have Brandy Sullivan up here and explain what's been done. Brandy and Shelley.
Good morning.
Thank you, guys, for asking us to come here and speak about this. President Gokunhour and Vice President Catlett have seen some of this data before, but I tried to include everything so everyone had a full picture of how far we've come with this program. So there is a timeline there, just talking about kind of how we've evolved the program since the very beginning, what our original vision was, wasn't really executable, so we, we kind of adapted several different times. Originally, when we went out, we weren't capturing enough data, so that was part of our problem, and we've adapted since then and now do capture that data, but we've ended up changing how addresses are put in, what information is required, and so it's been a little bit of an evolution to get to where we are now, but now we are capturing and tracking data better than we have since the very beginning. So there is a little bit of kind of how we've changed that, and some of the information had to wash, and that's in there as well, but the total numbers that we have and kind of snapshots of where we've been several times when we've taken these pulse checks is at the bottom of your sheet, and you can see in the last eight months, we have knocked out a significant amount of those. We have gone from where we were around 30% last year, 35% of them had a resolution, to where now we are just over 55% have a resolution. We have.
That's all.
Thank you. That is all Shelley, honestly. She has done a tremendous job of finding other ways to contact these people, to follow up with them. She's done an outstanding job of keeping all of her notes straight and knowing who to go back and call because they said they were working on their tags, and she came up with a letter that we sent to people who were non-responsive and non-compliant, so that we could try and really get that complacency. But to have 55 of them, 55% of them have a resolution now, where a year ago, that was 38%, that's significant steps ahead. On the next page of what I gave you, you will see information pertaining to the notices that are still in the system, so that you can see kind of how that's, those steps have gone. You can see in '21 and '22 where it was a more casual approach, there were not near as many notices given, and that was by our officers and the assessor's office. And then, once we started really pushing that and then tracking that data, you can see how we just kind of skyrocketed, and there were several months where we had 600 notices that were going out. All of that data, all of the phone calls that that generated, all of that information is on here, so you can kind of see that workflow that we've created. And then, as well as that, speaking for the sheriff's office with the lovely contracted Ms. Shelley that you have given us, how we have made the most of her hours that you have allotted us to use, and she has ebbed and flowed with that, those notices that have gone out, she has generated her own work. You can see where her call volume is higher than the number of notices that are out, because she is generating those calls going back through the system to identify people to reach back out to. And again, we also started sending letters to try and get compliance from people who were not home or not responsive. You look like you have a question.
I always have questions. No, 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 go ahead.
Okay. Well, I mean, that was, that's most of it.
Sorry to, sorry to mess up your.
No, that's okay.
Thought processor. But no, I mean, you know, you know, Steve and I, along with the administration of your office, the assessor's office, the school board, you know, has, has pushed to try and get this accomplished, and it's not as easy as what most people would think that it is to get accomplished.
That is very true.
Yeah, to cover the entire county, and a county that's in transition every day, it's hard to catch up to people. A lot of people have, you know, company cars that they travel in, and some are leased vehicles that they don't pay property taxes on, and so it, it's a challenge, and, you know, we get a lot of complaints from the public, especially now that schools starting back up, everybody will see the out-of-state plate, plates in the, in the lines at the schools, you know, and we'll get the complaints again, but, you know, I appreciate your efforts trying to get this needle down to where, you know, everybody's paying what they should be paying.
Absolutely.
That's kind of what we're, where we're at, you know, so.
Well.
I got, I got several comments.
Okay, absolutely.
First of all, thank you for the job you're doing. It's been long overdue. Secondly, it sounds like the cooperation with the assessor's office is very good.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Whenever we identify something, we reach right out to them.
And you're all working together very well at this point. Okay, great. The other thing, when you send out a letter on, on this, you mentioned in your letter that your personal property, when you pay it, you get credit for that on your income tax filing. If you don't, you should put that in the letter, that you get total credit, 100% of what you pay on personal property, on your state income tax return, so.
Yeah.
And that should be part of your letter. And the other thing, at one time, we developed, the school board helped to print those flyers to get to the attorney's office, of all the attorneys that do closures, or closings on new homes. And they hand them that flyer when they do the closing about this, that they have to change their tags within so many days. And then lastly, it looks like you are finally getting some people in magistrate court, and they're dealing with the people that don't respond, and I see different numbers there, and I would like to see, even though it's only a weekly paper now, an article about this whole program in the journal, make people aware of it, and make people aware of the fact that you can't end up in magistrate court and pay a, I don't know what the fine is, but at some point, are you all aware of any of the penalties that have been assessed for people aren't, that aren't following through?
Not.
Yeah.
Not, I'm sorry.
Well, but I, I think there should be an article about this in the, in the journal, and, and publicize it so that people are aware of it, and that, that you can be prosecuted if you don't do it. But there's no excuse anymore with the fact that you get credit back on your, on your state income tax. There's, there's no excuse at all not to pay it, so. And to this day, we still hear about it when school, every year, about, I'm in line dropping my kid off, and I see six cars with out-of-state tags there dropping their kids off. We hear about it all the time, but to make this much of an advance, and I know it's a slower process than we had hoped when we started several years ago, but at least we're making some positive headway, and, and truthfully, it benefits, you know, maybe we're, we're able to do $8,000 to y'all today extra because we've got more people paying their personal income tax now, so it helps the system, so, but thank you for what you're doing.
And our, and our commitment was to the sheriff's office, that in these efforts, that the dollars that we can recognize back would go back into our law enforcement, so that was our commitment.
And of course, the school board benefits more than we do. You know, there you get the 70% of this money goes to them, so.
And, and our last number was over 1,000 new tags that have been confirmed, new tags, so that's, hopefully, numbers we'll be able to see soon, now that it's a new tax season.
It should, and, and then, you know, everything runs a year behind anyway, so.
All right, anybody have any further questions or comments?
So casual math on the 1,073, let's just assume that the net tax on all of them was $200, let's just assume, which we know some are lower, that's $214,000. So you've invested just over, just that 50 grand to net 214, so pretty good deal, pretty good investment. Return on your money.
Yeah, as long as this not costing us money, then it's well worth the effort.
Absolutely.
I would really appreciate what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Shelley, anything you want to add?
No, I think they won't. I mean, your suggestions were great.
Yeah. They should know that, and, yeah.
A lot of people, a lot of people still don't know that. You get a dollar, dollar-for-dollar return on your tax return.
Right, and, and a lot of people, once they move in, they're not aware that they have to pay. It's amazing to me, they, one, don't think about it, and two, they're like, oh, well, my tax don't expire until December, so.
Let's check with the, let's check with the attorney's office and make sure they still have that in for that flyer.
Absolutely, yeah.
The school board printed them up for, for them to distribute, and in fact, we, they printed them to go to other places, too.
Yeah, we printed and took some around, so we may.
Yeah, so that, education, education is the whole key to this thing.
And the paper will help, that's true.
Yep.
We'll reach out right away.
Randy, if you get with Matt, he can help you get the article and get to the paper.
Perfect, thank you so much. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Thank you all.
I have just a quick question for Eric, just a quick question, and this, and I'm probably behind, behind on this, but just, I was just looking at this bid for the rifles that came in. So 76 rifles, 14 of them are, have an upgraded trigger system in them, and they have an upgraded can for them.
That's for our SWAT team.
Okay, so we're putting, are we putting, we're putting cans on all of the rifles? They're all getting, they're all getting suppressors?
I think that's our, I think that's our plan.
Okay, because I saw there was 76.
I didn't see what the bid came in at.
Yeah, that was the plan, to put them on all of them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me ask you this, what's the service life of your office rifles? Because obviously, I mean, I know they qualify with them, and they carry them around in the truck, in the car with them all the time, they're probably not something that gets utilized a lot. When you need them, you need them, I understand that, but like, what's the service life on them, and then what are you doing with the weapons that you have now?
Currently, they're about 10 years old, the service rifles. Our SWAT team is about four or five years old, but our SWAT team, they shoot a lot, so.
Sure, sure.
They're shooting like every single month, I don't know how many.
Right.
Thousands of rounds for that, that weapon. Our plan is, we still have our old service weapons, our Glocks, still in storage, and then with the old, well, with our old rifles, we want to go ahead and trade those back in and get, get some money back from the company that's going to be doing a bid. We're going to go ahead and speak to them about that, and they're going to buy them.
They'll buy back from you.
They'll buy, yes.
Yeah, the buyback program.
That's after the commission declares a surplus, isn't it?
Yeah, 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 I understood that. I just, I just saw that you were getting 76 cans, and I thought, well, they're going to put cans on all of the, everybody's service rifles, but.
We want our guys to have the best out there.
Okay.
Yeah, we did. That's right. You know, I saw a video yesterday of, on TV, of a shootout.
Three deputies got shot in southern.
Yeah.
All right, guys, you got anybody else or anything?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks for what you do.
Hey, chief, you stick around, we'll get you those bids.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other items from the public, and we have no reason for executive session, a motion or recess?
I mean, we're in recess.
We are in recess. Thank you all.